Person. The meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment. Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment. To unmute yourself, dial star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to shannon gentonan at s gentonan at lying county.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Be sure to pipe type public comment in the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at 27 South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada, eight nine four four seven. But all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the planning commission within 24 hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Grand Honeywell Lyon County Commission Chambers, 27 South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Item one is roll call and all commissioners are present in chambers. Now for the pledge, Audrey, would you lead us in the pledge?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Would stands one nation of God in the looseable of liberty and justice for all.
Item three, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The commission reserves the right to reduce this three minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the chair to calendar the matter for a future planning commission meeting. The planning commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there any public comment at this time?
Madam Chair, Jeff Page County Manager. Not usually the time for staff report, but I wanted to get this done before everybody left. I'd like to congratulate our community development director. He successfully completed his first year with Lyon County. He's going to stay, so that means I don't get to be the community development director anymore. I'm okay with that. And I just wanted to thank Andrew publicly for this past year, we've had a significant number of changes and getting things cleaned up and addressing problems that we didn't have time before. And I thank you for your patience and indulgence in allowing us to get those things addressed that once we got Andrew on board. So that's why I want to say thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Review and adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review it and does anyone have any corrections or comments?
Can you read about today's agenda?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Next is approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes? Are there any comments or corrections on those?
I just have one comment that was missing in the roll call. I was here.
Okay. We'll take a motion.
Motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll motion to approve the minutes from last month on July 12th with the change that I wanted to mention was here and not absent. I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item seven, advisory board reports. Do we have any other than the ones you just handed us? Okay. Item eight, public hearing items eight A for possible action D and G investments to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning on four parcels from C one neighborhood commercial and RR one first rural residential one acre minimum to MFR multifamily residential and SR one half suburban residential half acre minimum located at 14 Warwick Hills Drive, 103 Warwick Hills Drive and 100 Silverado Road, Mason Valley, Nevada. APNs 003 dash 021 dash 15 dash 16 dash 17 dash 80 18 PLZ dash 2022 dash 160.
Thank you for the record, Rob Pizell, Senior Planner. Hang on just a second while my PowerPoint loads up.
Madam Chair. Yes, I had a question. This project and the one behind. It looks to me like maybe staff could present them all at the same time and we could vote on them separately. I just was wondering if that's how it should be done because they're so.
They're very repetitive and I agree with that. So if you want to present for both of them at the same time, Rob, that would be great.
Thank you. I would suggest that as well.
Okay, can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we hear items eight A and eight B, the staff report together and that we vote on them separately.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yes, I will. Item eight B for possible action D and G investments to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for a merger and re subdivision tentative parcel map to merge the four parcels and re subdivide into four new parcels to correct two illegal parcels located at 14 Warwick Hills Drive, 103 Warwick Hills Drive and 100 Silverado Road, Mason Valley, Nevada. APNs 003 dash 021 dash 15 dash 16 dash 17 dash 18 PLZ 2022 dash 161.
Thank you. Once again, for the record, Rob Pizell, Senior Planner. As you can see on the display, the subject site is located in Mason Valley on the west side of you five A, basically the southwest corner, the intersection of Silverado Road and Warikills Drive. You can see on the right, there is a detail from the GIS maps and the subject site is outlined in red. It's located within a development known as Penrose Country Club Estates. It was recorded in April of 1965. Again, the area we're discussing is outlined in red on the detail on the right. Note that with the recreation in April of 1965, this development actually predates Lyon County's adoption of both the land use and development code as well as subdivision regulations. The goal of the developer at the time was, as you can see from the layout on the right, to develop a golf course community that had a mixture of detached, single family residential and commercial uses. You can see the blue arrows are outlining the areas or pointing to the areas that are C one currently zone C one. There are four located within the subdivision itself, as well as two that are on the the border of the US 95A frontage. The large RR five parcels you see within the center, basically it would would have been the golf course design at the time. Staff did some research as to how the duplexes were permitted on a non residential zoning district. In review in the 1973 Land Use and Development Code, in effect at that time, under Article 16A, the general non residential districts provisions, it specifically stated that C one zoning district, in effect at that time, did allow for uses or buildings permitted in the RR in the R two multiple residence district. That section of Article 16 is outlined in red on the right. Within that same land use and development code, under Article 14 R two multiple residences, it did call out for multiple family dwellings as permitted uses within the R two zoning district. As such, at the time duplexes would have been allowed in a in a commercial in a non residential zoning district in the C one zoning district. However, with the adoption of Title 10 in August of 1987, residential uses were no longer allowed within C one zoning district. As such, the existing duplexes on the parcels that are zone C one became nonconforming uses. They were lawfully established prior to adoption or change in the code, and that makes them the nonconforming use. APNs 003 21 17 and 18 are noted in the assessors maps as being illegal parcels. You can see that on the right. Staff has outlined again the general area in red and then circled the notation that seven and 18 are illegal splits. It appears that all four of the parcels on that in that area above Warwick Hills and then the two C one parcels were created by deeds starting in 1983. By that time, by 1983, the state legislature in Lyon County had adopted subdivision statutes and creating parcels by deeds had become an illegal form of subdivision. As noted earlier, the existing duplexes on the C one zone properties were lawfully established, but are no longer confirming under the existing regulations. There is a section entitled 15 15 20202C that allows any expansion or extension of nonconforming uses through approval of a conditional use permit. You'll also note that the two duplexes on the illegally created lots were built across three lines and you can see that with the red arrows and the yellow arrows. There was on the parcel with the yellow arrow a survey of lands based on those deeds. It's document number 111656. It did show that the duplex building was constructed up to the actual property. The roofie extended over it. So in essence, what the applicants are proposing to do is to amend the existing zoning from RR five on the on the large parcel, parcel 5003 02115 from RR five, which is the fifth rural residential, requires a minimum minimum lot size of 20 acres. And C one to suburban residential, a half acre minimum and MFR multifamily residential. Currently, they want to merge and re subdivide through the parcel map, the tentative parcel map process. In essence, what they're trying to do is address existing nonconforming uses and have zoning that accurately reflects the existing development of the parcels and create parcels where that are no longer illegal through being created through deeds. So as you know, with the rezoning, we have the three findings. The first finding is is the application consistent with policies in the adopted master plan and the underlying land use designation. As you can see in the detail from the Mason Valley land use map of the comprehensive master plan, it does designate this area as suburban residential as well as a cooperative planning area. You can see on the right, the the parcel itself outlined in red and then the land use designations below in the legend of cooperative planning area and suburban residential. Well, do want to point out that the application was sent to the city of Yarrington for comments. Basically, they just indicated that they wanted to make sure that they connected to the city's infrastructure. With regards, there is a detail as well on the comprehensive master plans land use table with regards to the for the first column on the detail on the right from that table, suburban residential, the land use designation itself. Under the title 15 zoning in the third column, it does include both the SR half and the MFR. Both of those are outlined in purple. And you'll see in the in the fifth column that the description and characteristics, again, mixture of housing types in a neighborhood setting, recognizable patterns. It allows for higher density residential uses. And again, as pointed out in the in the arrows in the far right column, it allows for both single family residential and duplex duplex developments. Finally, B, the proposed amendment will not be inconsistent with adequate public facilities policies contained within Title 15. There are currently city of Yarrington facilities for municipal water service located immediately adjacent to and readily available to the subject site. And there is currently Willow Creek General Improvement District Municipal Sewer Service Facilities also located immediately adjacent to and readily available. And we would want to point out that the application does would further implement goal LU one and the policies associated with goal LU one as well as goal goal LU two and the policy associated with LU two. The third finding is the proposed zoning amendment, zoning map amendment compatible with the actual or master plan adjacent land uses. The table on the right demonstrates that in looking at the existing properties to the north, south, east and west, we believe that the application would be compatible. You would note on the the parcels to the south and to the west as well as to the east of the subject site itself. All of those are either developed or vacant half acre to quarter acre, single family detached residential lots or the golf course lots within the Penrose Country Pub subdivision. With regards to the tentative, the merger and re subdivision tentative parcel map, again, what the applicant is proposing is to merge four parcels approximately equaling approximately 5.02 acres. The existing parcels, as you can see, are breaking down for their acreages underneath that and then re subdivide through the parcel map to create four new parcels. Those new parcels would be parcel one, which would be approximately 3.47 acres in size. Parcel two, approximately 0.18 acres in size. Parcel three, approximately 0.42. And parcel four, approximately two point, excuse me, 0.26 acres in size. The detail on the left shows the proposed new lot. The applicants proposed a merge and re subdivide that would improve the existing issues with regards to the required building setbacks from lives as well as convert illegal lot splits done by deeds into legal parcels through this parcel map process. This is detail or a site plan did request the applicant provide us to show where the proposed property lines would be relative to the existing existing developments on those three parcels. The existing duplex located on parcel four, proposed parcel four would intrude into the front setback along the Works Hills frontage. You can see that outlined in red on the detail on the right. The rest of the property line setback issues within the duplex structures as well as the illegal split issue would be corrected through this process. Again, the applicant, what the applicant is proposing would bring the properties into into more compliance with the existing regulations than what is going on now. As you can see, the tentative parcel map would comply with a minimum lot size requirements for both the Title 15 SR half for parcel number one and the MFR zoning districts for parcels two, three and four. There was a comment from through the Walker River Irrigation District from the Campbell Ditch Company. It does pass through the subject site. Tender parcel map application does show a 30 foot ditch easement running through proposed parcels one and three. It is outlined in parcel one in blue, as you can see on the right. Which company did submit comments. We did include those with the staff reports backup material requesting that any further development of proposed parcel one involve a meeting with the Campbell Ditch Company. The Walker River Irrigation Ditch Company and the applicants. Their concern is is that the proposed 30 foot wide ditch easement per the map would need to be widened in order to allow them to maintain the water conveyance feature through the property. So we did include that as a condition of approval to the for the tentative parcel map. With that, I believe the applicant representative is is available for questions as well, but staff, staff is as well.
Redd, do you have any questions for Rob?
No.
John? Michael?
No.
Audrey?
No.
Sean?
None.
I don't have any either, so the applicant's representatives here.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Rick Christian with Vincent Survey and I'm here on behalf of D and G Investments in regards to the items that are before you this morning pertaining to zone change and the parcel re sub. Murder and re subdivision of the parcels. So first of all, do you have any questions pertaining to the zone change? We'll approach that first.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the zone change? Do you know?
Don't really have a whole lot to say pertaining to the parcel and re subdivision, other than the fact that I have talked to David Schroni which company. Discussed it in regards to his comments pertaining to his letter. We have decided to go with a 50 foot wide ditch easement through there. The northerly side of the existing proposed 30 foot easement will stay in place and we're going to expand it, extend it 20 feet wider on the south. For a total of 50 feet. I saw the drawing that was presented on the screen and it didn't really state what the county was proposing in regards to width on that, but talking with Mr. Schroni, the 50 foot would be adequate according to him, and he is in attendance too, if you have any questions directed for him. So other than that, this has been something that I've been taught to several times in the past years, I mean, five, six years in regards to needing something to be done out here. We're just trying to get it all figured out and fixed. Ready questions?
Anyone have any questions for him?
I do. I know the the one building is not within that easement from, I'm assuming the street from the picture I saw.
It's a building setback.
Yeah, the building setback. Is that still going to make that an illegal setback or how are we? How how's that going to go about being fixed?
Well, that can't be fixed.
So it is what it is?
Yeah, because I mean, it's preexisting condition. It's been that way ever since it was built. So that's one issue we can address. However, on that same building you were talking about, the southern line of that building was encroaching on the property to the south to which with the new configuration of the parcels. The parcel that it was approaching on would now become a part of that parcel. So any and all encroaching in respect of that will be the one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment on items eight A or eight B at this time?
My name is David Schroni. I'm chairman, president of Campbell Ditch and I'm also a local rancher. We inherited a problem in the whole estate there. I, we have preexisting homes on the easement in places where we can't even do it. We have encroachment on both sides without giving us any room. I'm willing to work with with these people in this case, but I cannot give permission because I do not have a board vote. I do have to take that before my board. And I think our our board is going to tend to want to work with these people because they gave us the courtesy of contacting us. A lot of properties that were built in Penrose Estates, you guys have inherited this problem, just like I have, have encroached to the point where we have to take a mini excavator and lift it with a larger excavator and put it in the ditch to clean the ditch. And it has to run right down the bottom of the ditch. So this is going to be an ongoing program problem in this area. And I'm coming, be into my team. I'm 65 years old and I'm not going to be here forever, but I'd like to leave it better than I found it. I'd like the county to work more directly with my company and with WIRD to help us alleviate this problem. Slight history to this thing was we entertained the idea of going around Penrose Estates with our ditch. We had a water smart program, but due to COVID and the increased prices, that blew us out of the water. We don't have the money now to go around. It's just too expensive. Next dream plan, I guess, for that area might be making a pipe the whole way in the existing easement. Again, monies for ranchers for water delivery systems, very hard to get. I don't see us getting any chance of doing that without county support. So maybe in the future, we can line the dip, we can pipe the dip, we can do something so that these easement problem could be addressed and fixed. You know, I guess that's it. And what else to say, but I can't really give the authority to say, yes, we're going to do this. Yes, we're going to accept it without board approval. That's the main thing I want to say.
Audrey, do you have a question? No.
I I do. So what Rob was proposing was a 30 foot easement. Well, no, 50 can be removed from you. So the application is for a 30 foot easement. So I needed to ask, Rob, is that an amendment to the application, Rob? Their board hasn't even approved any of that. So what are we approving?
Yes. The recommended conditions are.
We can't agree, Rob.
Rob, you're cutting in and out.
I don't want it to be that.
No, it's still cutting in and out.
Mainly out.
Yeah. Could you please write your name?
More questions for me?
Are there any more questions for him?
At what point will your board approve the easement request?
Ma'am, I I I greatly suspect greatly suspect that we will approve it. We will take that. Any easement that we can get out of that area, we will take. And they're offering more on one side than the other. We just have to have the ability to travel both sides of the ditch. We don't know what side of the ditch is going to wash out. We don't know what side of the ditch is going to have a problem. And there are homes involved, and so it's a major concern for us to keep that for safety of the homeowners also. And we need to be able to travel both sides of the ditch and be able to to clean and leave our spoils. Nor the normal operation of a ditch in Mason Valley is we will go down and clean, put the spoils on the bank, allow the spoils to dry, and then we flatten them out. That is the normal operation of how the the ditches are serviced in this valley. And in the old days, there really was not a specified easement. You just had an easement and whatever you needed to do to do that, you were able to do. But in what has happened between nineteen sixty-five and now is we have people who have approached to the point where we cannot get to that. Place. And if we tear something down, according to law, we tear a fence down, going through making the cleaning, we have to put the fence back. It 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 is just gotten to be a problem where we have problems with spoils going through this area. We have problems with with just access. Lots of places you can't drive along the ditch. We'll actually have to come out, go out on the main road and come back in and then double back to that point and go on. And we're spot cleaning, to be honest with you, and doing the best we can not to damage property or hurt anyone. But it we don't always get it done. It's 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 a very tough area. I I've approached the county manager before to to maybe the county could help us with with lining that ditch or or putting in box over. Through that area so that the so this problem would be eliminated. But, you know, financial constraints and on both sides, the county and us. Very expensive projects.
I have a question for Rob, and I don't know if he can answer. Rob, can you go back to that picture that shows the ditch and the easements? So we can kind of get a sense of how much is thirty feet easement and how much might be fifty foot easements?
Oh, you're waiting it. If I may.
Have we lost Rob?
I think we have. I don't see him on there.
No, I'm still here.
Okay.
I'm I'm sure I'm sure that my board will okay with this project. I'm sure of that. Because you're not really changing the layout of the ground. So I I don't want to be the one to cause problems for this project. My main reason for coming here is I want this board to understand how difficult prior boards have made it on us to do our business in that area. And I just want you guys to be aware, and I appreciate it very much, and I want to thank you for your service.
So real quick, I think I know what Audrey's talking about, so I'm looking at the layout. So it looks like parcel three pretty much is going to have to stay at that thirty is what it looks like.
They're talking about taking, holding that line and bringing it fifty feet to the south.
To the south.
Yeah.
So that would be within parcel one, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what that's what she's trying to make sense of. So maybe that's something, yeah, exactly. He can answer. So I feel like parcel three is kind of set in stone.
My name is Rick Christian of Vincent Survey. shed a little bit more light on what we're discussing here in regards to this ditch easement. One of my concerns is, you know, we are not changing any physical features on the ground out there, buildings or land or topography or anything. For this to be completely shut down because of this ditch easement, you know, and then if that happens, then we're going to have the existing encroachment to continue on together with the illegal parcels that we're just trying to get cleaned up. But in respect to your question pertaining to where the fifty foot line, if I can approach approach the the board, I do have a layout real quick that shows exactly what a fifty foot line would be.
Can we see that? Okay, pass it on down.
Has Rob seen this?
No, I just.
All right.
I need to give you any comments. Last week.
The record, can you hear me now? This is Rob Pizel, senior planner.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Let me share my screen. You should see the detail. And then parcel.
Rob, you're cutting out again.
Okay. Down.
Thank you so much for sharing that.
My my understanding, Rick, is that you would add another twenty feet to the south and create a fifty foot easement on the south of the line. One.
So your arrow ended at parcel three. Is that what you were asking, Rick? Rob?
The fifty foot line?
Yes.
The the fifty foot line would actually intersect the southerly boundary of the overall project site approximately at that southeast southwest corner of parcel three.
Okay.
So the entirety of the triangle contained in parcel three would would be under easement from the northerly line of the easement to that southwest corner. So if you project a line parallel with the southerly line of the easement as shown as thirty feet from that southwest corner all the way out to Silverado, that's where the fifty foot line would would be. If that makes sense.
Is that clear to you, Rob?
I apologize. I jumped out of the meeting and tried to rejoin to see if that cleared up the audio problems.
Seems to.
Seems to have.
Yes.
It's working much better.
You want me to repeat what he said?
Um, just I'll go over it real quick, Rick, to make sure. Let me. Hopefully, you're seeing the the proposed tentative parcel map.
Yes.
Okay, my understanding, Rick, was basically it would be twenty feet along the an additional twenty feet along the south of the center line. At least for parcel one. I don't know what you can do with parcel three. Is that is that correct?
Well, it's relatively correct. It's it's twenty additional feet south of the south line of the proposed thirty foot for a total of fifty feet wide in that.
Okay.
It earlier that we had dropped off is the the new southerly line of that easement would intersect the southerly line of the project property site approximately at the southwest corner of parcel three. So so that entire triangle contained in parcel three would be all easing from the north line of that easement all the way to the southwest corner.
Yeah, but then honestly, to address that, what I would recommend from staff is that add a condition that the outcome will widen the proposed Campbell ditch easement to the satisfaction of the Campbell ditch company, given the site constraints and existing development, and then provide documentation of that agreement at submission of the final parcel map application.
That's fine.
Thanks, Rick.
You bet.
Okay.
I'm not making that motion.
Okay. Is there any more public comment on either of these two items eight A and eight B? Do you have anybody online, Andrew?
I don't see any.
Okay. Any other? Oh, okay. David Ray?
David Ray, Chairman of the Mason Valley Citizens Advisory Board. You have a letter of transmittal in front of you that says our board had no respondents or participants in our meeting. That is a problem. We had this listed for a whole week. We would have liked to have had people show up and give their testimony so we could have given it to you. Unfortunately, nobody showed up, and we didn't have anything to give you. We're unaware that there were differences in the situation today. Just want to let you know that we didn't willfully stop this these two actions. We just didn't have anybody show up to give any input. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any other commissioner comments or questions? Okay, we will hear a motion on item eight A first.
All motion. Based on the aforementioned findings, I move the Lyon County Planning Commission for a recommendation of approval to Lyon County Board of Commissioners for the zoning map amendment requested by D and G Investments, Inc., Rex T., I hope when I'm saying this right. Miss Jeremy Trust, Miss Shumora, thank you, trust for zoning map amendment C dash one neighborhood commercial on approximately point zero or point three three acres and RR dash one first residential, one acre minimum on approximately four point six nine acres to M F R multi-family residential on approximately point eight six acres and SR one half, I guess, half, single family residential, half acre minimum on approximately three point four seven acres generally located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Silverado Road and Work Hills Drive, fourteen Work Hills Drive, one oh three Work Hills Drive, and one hundred Silverado Road in Mason Valley, APNs zero zero three dash zero two one dash fifteen dash sixteen dash seventeen dash eighteen PLZ twenty twenty-two one sixty.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I just had a question before I vote. Does this one have the condition in it? No.
No.
This is the reason. Thank you. This is just the map.
Right.
Yes. But it's okay. I'm an eye.
Okay, any opposed? Seeing none. Okay, our next is item eight B. Who wants to try and make this motion?
All motion.
Okay.
Based on the aforementioned findings, one three three, I moved at the Lyon County Planning Commission for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners of the merger and re-subdivision slash tenant parcel map requested by D and G Investments and Inc. slash Rick T. and Miss Shumora, Miss Shumora. Trust APN zero zero three dash zero two one dash fifteen zero zero three dash zero two one dash sixteen, zero zero three dash zero two one dash fifteen or seventeen and zero zero three dash zero two one dash eighteen PLZ dash twenty twenty-two dash one sixty-one subject to the following conditions of approval, one through fifteen and another amendment or condition will be put into place and for the easement of fifty feet for the ditch easement before the middle is finalized.
Is that motion okay, Rob?
Will wordsmith it to reflect the cooperation between the the ditch company and the applicants?
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item eight C for possible action Winston Solar Project to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for a conditional use permit to allow photovoltaic solar power generating facility, including an onsite substation, onsite operations and maintenance building on a parcel zoned M one generally located on the north side of Sierra Drive approximately zero point five miles east of the US ninety-five A Sierra Drive intersection, Mason Valley, Nevada, APN zero one four dash zero nine one dash oh nine PLZ dash twenty twenty-two dash one six seven. This is yours too, Rob?
Oh, you know, I always get the fun ones. For the record, Rob Pizel, senior planner. Just by way of location to identify the parcel we're talking about, it's generally located about half mile east of the intersection of US ninety-five A on Sierra Way east of Wabaska in the northern part of the Mason Valley. You can see the the property itself highlighted in yellow below. Pardon me. Things a little jumpy. Again, the the project itself equals approximately one thousand seven hundred and twelve acres in size. You can see the detail itself, the parcel itself outlined in blue from the assessor's page. The topography, again, no significant natural topographic features. However, as noted in the staff report, there are a number of easements, transmission facilities and water conveyance features that cross through the property itself. The Walker River Irrigation Wabaska Drain and the ditches associated with the Wabaska Drain are outlined in red. Cutting through the parcel within the green green outline, you can see the southwest gas, natural gas pipeline. The brown shows the Union Pacific Railroad tracks and the blue shows the Fort Churchill Buckeye one hundred one twenty KB transmission overhead transmission line that runs through the property itself. The N B Energy Transmission Line is the key to the application being submitted for this this property. What the applicants are proposing to do is locate a photovoltaic solar power generating facility on the site itself. The site features, again, it is within an area that's designated as X unshaded on the FEMA firm panels for this area. The staff report then goes into a description of the property, but this is the overall site conceptual site plan at this point in time. As you can see, they are, they have noted the fact that there are a number of transmission facilities that cut through the property, including the N B Energy Transmission Line, the Southwest Gas Natural Gas Line, the railroad tracks, as well as the Wabaska Drain and the ditches associated with the with the irrigation conveyances within this area. It does show a conceptual layout of the solar arrays themselves, as well as the location of the substation and the operation maintenance facility that's proposed for this. And it also shows the gentai line that will transmit the electricity generated by this facility to the Fort Churchill Power Station, which is located to the to the southeast of the subject site itself. Again, another feature that drew the applicants to this property for this facility. The the staff report goes into a description of the operation itself. For that reason, we won't go into detail unless there are specific questions. Would note that the applicant's representative is is available for any questions as well. In reviewing a conditional use permit, we do go through the individual findings. Those are included in the staff report. We'll go over them real quickly. The first is it's consistent with policies in the adopted master plan and the general purpose and intent of the applicable zoning district regulations. Again, within this area, the property itself is designated as employment in the twenty, excuse me, this should be the twenty twenty comprehensive master plan, the land use policy LU one four. Again, locate industrial development designated on countywide land use or determined by criteria, and then industrial uses include the following. And it should be noted, the last sentence, new industrial use should be located in areas that do not adversely impact existing residential settlements. Additionally, LU two, policy LU three two, businessy and industry locations that are consistent with future land use plan. Again, locate and designated areas shown on the future land use plan where existing where public facilities exist or are planned to accommodate development. or are planned to accommodate development cost effectively. Again, given this property's location to the existing Fort Churchill Buckeye Transmission Line and the Fort Churchill Power Plant, we felt this finding could be met with regards to the master plan on the zoning part of it. Again, you'll note that the property itself is currently zoned M1. The respective zoning districts in Title fifteen or LIR and LIL, excuse me, LIR and HIR, both industrial rural designations. And then within table fifteen, three, twenty, four, for both of those zoning districts, the LIR and the HIR solar power generating facilities, non-commercial, do require a conditional use permit in those two zoning districts. Finding B compatible with character and integrity of adjacent development neighborhoods and includes improvements or modifications either onsite or within public right of way that mitigate any potential development related adverse impacts such as traffic, noise, odors, visual nuisance or other similar adverse impacts on adjacent development and neighborhoods. There is a specific section in, in Title fifteen that deals with the siding requirements for commercial solar generating, power generating facilities. It includes a minimum parcel size of ten acres, which the project certainly exceeds. Setbacks, again, the applicant can comply with the standards. If necessary, they can propose alternatives, but the alternatives must meet or exceed this standard. This is the details included in the land use plans in the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. As you can see, the area to the north of the, of the project is designated as as open space, excuse me, not open space, but resource. And then the site itself, as you can see in the legend, is designated as employment. Okay, the third sighting is the components of any commercial solar facility must be set back a minimum of thirty feet. And again, they're showing that fourth can't be located in the Comstock Historic District. Or if it is, then it has to meet the certificate, get the certificate of appropriateness from the commission. Yeah, this project doesn't have that issue. Unless otherwise approved, there is a height limit not to exceed twenty-four feet and in compliance with the FAA regulations for height and lighting. We did include a condition of approval for the Gentai Line that ties the proposed power facility into the Fort Churchill Power Plant. The Gentais could range in size from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and seventy feet above ground level. For that reason, we require that they file that FAA Form seven forty, sixty dash one and provide documentation of that, submit a priority issuance of mass rating permit for the, for the project itself. Again, our concern is more that any requirements from the FAA for painting or lighting be met. And then minimum standards, as called out in chapter fifteen, three, three, seven. Staff port goes through those off-street parking. Again, they are proposing twelve onsite employees after the construction period. They will be required to provide onsite parking for those. With regards to the construction traffic anticipated, again, we did send the application to NDOT as well as the county road department. Neither thought that for the construction period, any necessary improvements would be required for US ninety-five A Sierra Way intersection. Next, maintenance, again, they are proposing to maintain the area as well as maintain some of the onsite vegetation to address some of the dust control issues that solar generating facilities of this type have created in the past. The concern being dust control. Any manufacturing or fabrication processes have to be take, taken place indoors. They are proposing that as part of the operation and maintenance facility. Pollution control and nuisance abatement, again, given the size of the property and the amount of grading that will occur, they will be required to go through the state as well as accounting for grading permits that disturb over, over five acres in size. Heat, glare and light. They need to make sure that they don't infringe upon the use and enjoyment of properties beyond the boundaries. Would point out that it's been our experience that is that technology has improved. They've become, these panels have become more absorbent in order to maximize the electrical output. They're non-reflective at this point in time. So the concerns that you hear in the past with regards to glare created by these types of facilities, the, the panels these days absorb more than they reflect. Ground vibrations, again, the amount of ground vibrations created by this should not be discernible. Typically, the noise you get is, or the hum you hear is the, the most obnoxious thing about them. Odor, dust, dirt, smoke, again. We don't believe that this facility will generate odors, dust or noise or smoke, or excuse me, odors, dust, dirt or smoke. Noise, again, there is a specific standard. It's measured at the property lines where it's adjacent to commercial or industrial user zone. It's a seventy-five DBA and nighttime seventy DBA. And when it's adjacent to a residentially zoned property, the daytime is sixty-five DBA and nighttime sixty DBA. Toxic gases and fumes, again, shouldn't, shouldn't generate any of those liquid pollutants. Again, they're not, they, they wouldn't be generating any liquid pollutants. You'll note that in the description of the operation, they do, depending on the type of battery system they, they propose to use, there is a type of battery that does require some containment. They are proposing that as part of the application. And then, of course, the building permit required through the community development department. And then it does allow for deviations from the standards, but it requires them to go through the variance process and identified in chapter fifteen, two, oh, three. C again reflects back to generate vehicular traffic that can't be accommodated by existing planned or conditioned roadway improvements. Again, note that neither NDOT nor the road director, road superintendent did not forward any comments with regards to the traffic generation of the project. Neither for the construction period nor the operational aspect of it. Similar with D. Again, at this point in time, they're not proposing the requirement of any additional conditions of approval for traffic impact mitigation. E, the proposed use addresses adverse impacts, including visual impacts and noise. Again, I think with the, the improvements to the photovoltaic panels and the noise generation restrictions at the property lines, we believe that this finding can be met. And then the proposed conditional use complies with all additional standards and requirements from any other reviewing agencies. Again, none of the reviewing agencies proposed or required anything beyond what the, what their standards are. Not material to detriment, not materially detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare, not result in material damage or prejudice to other properties in the vicinity. We haven't been able to identify any facet of the proposed project that would be detrimental to the public's health, safety or welfare or result in material damage or prejudice to the other properties in the vicinity. Again, the Gentai Line will, will head to the east to connect to Fort Churchill, which is adjacent to the southeast corner of the property. They are proposing to work or they are conditioned to work with Walker River Irrigation District to make sure their setbacks are met so that the water conveyance features that run through the property can be maintained. Then you'll note that staff report is the next item. And then they are proposing to utilize water and have an onsite septic system. Again, both of those have to go through the state prior to and receive approval prior to issuance of a mass rating permit and or building permit of the project. We did send the application to the Mason Valley Fire Protection District. Again, they, they did not have any significant comments that aren't included in the conditions of approval. They do want to get, noting that this is a conceptual plan and the layout is subject to change, given the conversations with the Walker River Irrigation District. They want to make sure that the Mason Valley Fire Protection District Chief wanted to make sure that they were kept up to speed to make sure that they've got emergency access. They've got water supply for fire flows and review the building construction. And then compatibility with surrounding uses, again, the area to the, to the north is designated as, as open area. To the east, you have the, the Fort Churchill Substation. We did send the application to the state for comment. We did not receive any comments from the Division of Wildlife. They indicated that they felt the project would impact their, their property. We did receive a question from a property owner located to the west of the subject site, Mr. Bennett. Basically citing a concern about any overhead transmission lines from the project. We did relay to him that the Gentai Line would actually head to the southeast of the property and not, not cross anywhere near his property. With that, we are recommending approval of the application based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. With that, I'll try and answer any questions. And again, we do have a applicant's representative here as well.
Loretta, do you have any questions for Rob? John? Michael? Connie?
What's the lifespan of that project?
Um, the applicant will probably be better able to describe that. Typically, to be honest, I'm, I've never seen a, a solar power generating facility that reached the end of its, of its lifetime. Do you want to note that one of the requirements is they submit a decommissioning plan? The applicants have done that. Basically, once the facility is no longer needed or no longer economical, they will follow the decommissioning plan and, and return the site to its relatively natural state, including revegetation, regrading and revegetation.
Okay, if we have no more questions for Rob.
So, so mine's not a question necessarily, it's just a comment. It's because a lot of people might not be familiar with this area is that there's already one that's existing not too far from this, maybe not in the magnitude, the size that we're looking at today, but there's, it's not new to the area. There's already similar solars as this in that general area.
But can we hear from the applicant's representative? Can you please sign your name for us too, please?
Of course. Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair. My name's Devin Muto. I'm with EDF Renewables. Here today also with me is Phil Cotton. He's one of our land agents and also on the Zoom, we have David Calderon. He's one of our film managers that's been spearheading this project. Appreciate the opportunity to address you today. I do have a presentation that I believe Rob has that he may be able to pull up, but if not, I can, I can also bring it otherwise. To address the specific question about lifespan of the projects, generally what we're estimating these days is between thirty-five and forty years for lifespan. We try to contract them usually between fifteen and twenty years. And then after that, either we operate them merchant or we seek additional contracts for operation.
Okay, I, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
When each solar panel kind of has a lifespan, what happens when they reach the end of their lifespan?
So the, the solar panels, those are all included in that thirty-five, forty-year lifespan expectancy. If for some reason they need to be replaced during the timeframe, we have contracts with the different solar panel manufacturers. And so we'll work with them to swap out the solar panels. And we're working with a number of the tier one manufacturers right now who are carrying out recycling programs. And so what we do is we work with them to get the panels routed back to the recycling system when we purchase the new panels.
So recycling already is in place? That technology is working now?
I would say that is in place, is not fully ramped up yet. We're right now seeing the significant increase in volume for retired solar panels. So we're also seeing that the recycling capacity right now is just starting to ramp up significantly.
Okay, I also had a question about the water usage, like during construction, three hundred acre feet a year. And then once it's up and running thirty acre feet a year, how's the water system handled? Does it end up going back into the aquifer at some point?
Yes, so the water that's used during construction is primarily for dust control. And so it is applied to the ground. I, I've talked to hydrologist before and asked how much of that actually makes it back into the hopper. I don't, they said it's probably minimal. I think a lot of it sits in the upper layers and then ultimately evaporates again.
Okay.
But that's the, the result of it. During operations, the primary water use there is for panel washing. We actually have moved away from panel washing for the most part, although we keep it in our permits just in case we do need to wash the panels. But again, if we do wash the panels, it goes onto the panels, it then drips off to the drip line underneath the panels. And again, I think that it stays in the upper layers of the soil and eventually evaporates. Not much of it actually makes it back into the hopper.
Okay. Audrey, any questions?
I just wanted to, since you're standing there and you're here.
And if you have a little bit of a presentation, I can go.
Yeah, Rob says that, you know, most of these panels absorb more than they put off glare. And I, and your application stated that you have really good filtering system. But these do track east to west and, and my current, my concern has always been for the travelers which are east of your project. Now, the west of your project. The afternoons and in how that you're fairly certain that they're not going to be blinded or, you know, from the glare.
Yeah, yeah, as Rob mentioned, the technology's advanced a lot more. And so the, they're really made to capture the light and absorb as much light as they can. And in fact, we're usually using bi-facial panels now, which even take the light that's reflecting off the ground and, and use it on the backside of the panels as well. So because of that, you know, needing to pull all the energy in that they can, it's really minimize the amount of reflection that comes off. And we have a number of other projects elsewhere and are not seeing any glare issues with adjacent travelers.
If you have a presentation, you're welcome to give it now and if we have any more questions, we'll ask you.
And I'll be quick.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. Rob did a great job in explaining the project, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna linger too much here. That is, right, we can go to the next slide. All right, so I just want to introduce you very briefly to our company, EDF Renewables. We're owned by a parent company, EDF Group. I just want to emphasize that we are going in concern. We are here to stay with the project. We have the capacity and the financial backing, the years of experience to support a project this, to work with the county and make sure that you know that we're gonna follow all our commitments and requirements of the permit. We do in North America have our own company here. It's actually headquartered in California. That's where I'm located. And within that, the EDF Renewables Company, we have three divisions, Rizcale Power Distribution Solutions and Asset Optimization, which is actually our operating side. So that kind of sets us apart from a number of other solar developers and the fact that we actually build the project and then we own and operate the product. So we're with this project for the long term. The, you know, we mentioned up to twelve employees being on site. Those are employees that would be out here working on the project and reporting directly to our headquarters back in California. We also are highly experienced. We've been operating in North America for over thirty years. Our origination actually goes back to supporting operation of wind farms in California down in the Palm Springs area. But since then, we've expanded greatly. And as you can see here, we have a number of products that we have either in operation or in development throughout the Southwest. Most of them are in Nevada and California. That's actually where I focus. But, you know, very good experience and we've got products that are in all stages of development, so from operations to construction. Particularly in Nevada, we also have very good experience. We are and we have an operational project right now down just north of Las Vegas called Switch Solar. We're also currently under construction with our Arrow Canyon Solar Project two hundred megawatts. The Moab Indian Reservation and a number of other projects that are under construction or in development, including this Winston Solar project that we're presenting here today. So Rob already mentioned about the project. One thing that I'll point out is this is kind of early point in the project. Right now, we're being told that we wouldn't be able to be operational until twenty thirty. And we're trying to see if we can move that date up. But as you probably heard, about energy is doing a lot of additional construction along the transmission lines. They have two major projects called Green Lake West and Green Lake North, both being into the Fort Churchill Substation. So that's right now pushing our project delivery date out pretty far. Hopefully, we can pull that back a little bit more, but we probably wouldn't start construction on this if it is a twenty thirty project, wouldn't start construction until around twenty twenty eight. Hopefully, we can do it sooner. If you can just, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to hit a little bit on the project benefits. As Rob mentioned, this is cited on industrial land, obviously industrial land for you is to, you know, employ folks, generate revenue for the county. Projects like this do have a significant employment associated with it. Up to four hundred construction jobs during peak construction. Around twelve up to twelve permanent jobs for operations and maintenance. And then there's also significant amounts of benefits that come with the project, whether it's property tax payments, sales tax payments, other associated indirect support of the surrounding community. And then we also will be executing service agreements as necessary and providing other, you know, community support services. And I see, can, did you have a question?
Yeah, about your employment, your jobs. They're mainly construction jobs that are going to be available to Nevadans because you mentioned earlier that those twelve employees are your employees that you're bringing with you, right?
No, we would hire them locally.
Okay, thank you.
But but and then all the construction workers are also local.
Okay, thanks.
I think we get on this slide. We already talked about the location. I think we keep going. And we already talked about the site plan. This is a conceptual site plan. As I mentioned, we're early stages. We'll continue to work on refining this. And we are committed to working with the Walker River Irrigation District as well as the numerous other easement holders throughout property to address their issues and also to, you know, figure out how best to accommodate the building project and get executed successfully. And I think that concludes my slides. Thank you very much.
Okay, Loretta, do you have any questions?
No.
John? Michael? Any more questions, Audrey? John, Connie, any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? None online?
I don't see any online.
Okay, if there's no public comment, I'm ready to hear a motion.
I'll make a motion. Based on the aforementioned findings, A through G, the Lyon County Planning Commission forwards a recommendation of approval of the request by Winston Solar FC LLC Dan C. and Tara L. Moros for the conditional use permit to construct and operate a commercial solar energy generating facilities in the M one General Industrial Zoning District APN zero one four dash zero one nine dash zero nine PLZ dash twenty twenty two dash one sixty seven subject to the recommended recommended conditions of approval, one through eighteen.
All seconds up.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Does anybody need a break before we continue on? Are we good to go? Okay, item eight D for possible action. K-Scale LLC to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for a conditional use permit for an energy generating development to include both geothermal energy systems and solar power generating systems, as well as a research and development facility and modular data centers in Mason Valley, Wabaska at five 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 North Highway ninety five A, APN zero one four dash zero eight one dash zero five PLZ dash twenty twenty two dash one six nine.
Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting on behalf of Lyon County. Apologies, I think we had a little mix up on who was going to go first here. Seems the applicant's got some representatives here as well. Subject site as introduced is located in Mason Valley, Wabaska, approximately ten miles north of Yarrenton. The image on the left is our vicinity map showing the location. And on the right is the parcel configuration. The applicant is K-Scale LLC. This image again, from the staff report, zooms in on the assessor's plaque of the site and shows Highway ninety five A running through the site roughly northeast. Total area of the parcel is three hundred and ninety acres plus. Site's largely vacant. There are dirt roads and some NV power lines that run along some of the periphery. We don't have great GIS imagery, which is why I used the FEMA FER map seen on the right of this slide, showing that there's no significant photography on the property. And except for that northwest corner, the entire subject site, it's in the X unshaded flood insurance rate map FEMA zone. That would mean no flood plain development permits would be required, except for anything proposed at that northwest corner, which is not proposed. Summary of the applicant's request is a conditional use permit for two uses, geothermal and solar power generation. Project as presented in its preliminary stage includes three phases. The first two stages would address the construction and establishment of geothermal and solar power generating components. And then the third stage considers a research center. I think they have some other names for it as well, but essentially another structure as well as computer server data farms, essentially data centers. And that is to clear up some confusion because I think we received some questions. The research center and the the data centers are the primary function for this project. The construction of solar and geothermal power generation facilities on site is to power their own endeavors on the property. I did receive some comments from Mr. Bennett. As Mr. Pyzel alluded to in the last item, he had concerns about transmission lines potentially meeting this process property. And I did want to point out that the goal here is not to just generate power for sale back to the NV Energy Grid. It is instead to power their own endeavors on site. The master plan character district for the site is rural, as are all the surrounding parcels. And the actual master plan designation is industrial. You'll see the site there in the middle. The line that runs roughly east-west there is the relative location of the Union Pacific Road Line. Per chapter three of the master plan, the type of uses proposed in this project are consistent with with the with the types of development that are stated to be appropriate in industrial land use. Zoning on the site is currently ME, standing for industrial states. As you've heard many times, that's from our spider inspired Title X Development Code. The zoning consistency matrix adopted in twenty eighteen with Title fifteen, our current code. Convert ME zone properties to light industrial. So this this property is subject to loud uses, required entitlements and development standards within the light industrial zoning district. Notably, in this area of Mason Valley, probably not a surprise. There are no public facilities available, so there are no public water or sewer facilities for connection. Before we jump into the site plan, I did want to take advantage of some of the images provided by the applicant showing just conceptual examples of solar facilities. So that would be on the left. I know that the last presentation went into some great detail about the types of panels that are going to be likely used with this project as well. So I won't belabor the point there. The image in the middle, again, just a conceptual design for the geothermal power plant. The the image in the bottom middle is just really a conceptual image of the research center. We don't have details for that. I'll get into more of the entitlement specifics in the next slides. And then on the right, it's an image of a modular data center example. So this project, as a progressive, would continue to add these modules as their capacity increases. This image is a little tough to decipher. It is in staff report and the applicant submitted materials. On the left here is 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 actually the site plan. The the Highway ninety five orientation, I think, is just the best reference point. And we have three phases here proposed, the first one in red. So I did try and summarize the the phasing plan. Of course, the the staff report does include more details of the entirety of each phase. But most specifically, Phase One would begin with N dot connection. So further conditions of recommended conditions of approval, the applicant would be required to coordinate with Nevada Division of Transportation for approaching permits onto ninety five A. They would also, once they've gone through the appropriate county approval, start designing their internal roadway roadways and construct the first array of solar panels, approximately five acres is considered. In order to get things started, they are going to include in the application, it says a gen set, which is essentially just a an engine and an alternator, so they have some preliminary power on the site, as well as bringing in that first data center module. The second phase is proposed to go through the processes necessary. And again, we'll go into more detail on the future slides for the geothermal component of the project, as well as an expansion of the solar array in Phase Two, approximately another ten acres. An additional data center modules. And then Phase Three considers construction of the actual research center and the final addition of data centers. I put dates here that reflect the information submitted by the applicant. However, the staff report does note that the county is not recognizing the proposed schedule for implementation. And personally, I think it's really ambitious. I'm happy for them. But they do have a number of hoops to jump through before they'll start putting a shovel on the ground. The first phase proposed for implementation by the end of this calendar year, Phase Two, which would include both the preliminary work as well as the actual drilling for the geothermal components. Again, contemplates a beginning date this calendar year, moving into twenty twenty four. And the actual data center also, again, contemplates a December twenty two kicking off point with construction ambitiously considered for completion in June of twenty twenty three. So I I tried to summarize some of the more important items in the staff report based on some of the responses I've I've offered to people who have contacted us, as well as just sort of reading through the project and thinking what would the the commission need to see and what would the board ultimately want to know about staff's review. First and foremost, the research center does not have any approval through the CUP other than the fact that it's directed to submit for an administrative design review to staff. At that point, we would assess compliance with the allied zoning development standards. So that would include setbacks, parking, screening, landscaping, height of building, et cetera. The second, and I think most significant comment here, and it is included in all the conditions of approval, is that Title fifteen includes very specific standards for geothermal generating systems. They include specific mention of the numerous state agencies that are required for approval of a geothermal facility. I won't read them all, but, you know, Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Water Resources, State Health Department, et cetera. Third, the solar use also has a set of specific standards from Title fifteen. And we'll we'll touch on some of those moving forward. So Chapter three, three, six, zero, nine, solar generation. It's also referenced in the staff report and the recommended conditions of approval. And finally, both solar and geothermal as industrial uses are subject to our performance standards for industrial uses. Those are more generalized, but again, the applicant will be responsible for demonstrating compliance with Chapter three, three, seven, zero, three. Findings for conditional use permits are found in Chapter two, thirty, zero, six, and we can move into them. I I just pulled out summaries from each of the findings. I've used bold lettering and some underlines here to not really take up too much time here. But specifically, the first finding is addressing consistency with the master plan. The applicant did provide and quote land use policy one point four and three point one from Chapter three of the twenty twenty master plan. Staff does agree that they are appropriate and that the proposed site, as quoted in land use policy one four, new industrial uses should only be located in areas that do not adversely impact distant residential settlements settlements. Staff recognizes there are no substantial residential settlements settlements in the area. And per policy three, one, which suggests using renewable energy sources, of course, that's what this project is based upon. So staff's in agreement with this finding. Finding B addresses compatibility with adjacent development and specifically requests review of mitigation efforts to minimize impacts related to traffic noise, odors, visual nuisances, et cetera. Construction phases of this project will have the most significant impact from staff's perspective on adjacent uses. East and west, there aren't really much in the way of any development, although the previous item you heard would be to the east of the site. So I suppose that's coming online, but of course, it's also a solar use. So as far as compatibility and threatening the integrity of adjacent development, I would think the same type of use seems perfectly compatible. And therefore, this finding can also be made. Third finding addresses vehicular traffic and existing or proposed roadway infrastructure. As mentioned here a couple of times, N dots is the authority for Highway ninety five A. Highway ninety five A is readily, it's ready to accommodate any additional traffic, not just during construction, but also at ultimate buildout. The applicant's materials don't really suggest more than maybe fifty employees for the research center, but again, that would still be going through administrative design review. If by chance that facility at the applicant's whim was considered for expansion or to be much larger, staff would have the authority to request a traffic impact assessment at that stage. Finding D, again, looks at roadway improvements and traffic controls. Suggest that staff review any mitigation efforts. Again, Highway ninety five A is more than capable of handling any additional traffic due to the use. Additionally, language within the applicant's material suggests they already are aware of what will be requirements for fencing and limited access to the geothermal area, as well as probably, I guess, once we get to that ABR for the for the research center, there would be some security measures at that point as well. Finding E is somewhat redundant. Finding E is somewhat redundant, addressing impacts to adjacent properties. Again, just a summary from the staff report here that some of the surrounding uses are similar and almost exact to the the proposed use. Just to the north of the subject site is homestretch, which was Nevada's first geothermal plant, it's still in operation. We already heard the last item, solar is proposed to the east. So addressing existing residential development to the south and sort of separated by the the Itronics building and south of the Union Pacific Rail Line, there are some existing residences. But using Google Earth, they they appear to be over six tenths of a mile to the south. And of course, the area is along the highway and it is owned industrial. So I don't know that the expectation for surrender is is reasonable. So staff believes this find may be made. Finding F mentions additional standards imposed by other agencies. Again, staff has has pointed out some of the code references to state agencies for geothermal. But that this would also apply to the advocate being responsible for compliance with fire. Mason Valley Fire District review of any designs and and approval from for instance, N D P for a septic system and that a division of water resources for a well. So the the C U P has been conditioned, so the demonstrate compliance with that before moving forward. The Mason Valley Fire Protection District will provide fire and emergency medical services in line county sheriff's office. Of course, would provide law enforcement services. Finding G, finding G again addresses adjacent properties and potential detrimental impacts. We've already sort of covered most of this, so it is repeating the information. But notably, dust rose on dust control on site will be part of the the management plan for the ultimate build out of the property ninety five, highway ninety five A can accommodate traffic. And N D P and Division of Water Resources would be the state agencies for many sewer and wells. I before moving to to questions, I I did want to call out some of the highlights of the code sections that are required by staff and in the recommended conditions of approval for demonstrating compliance by the applicant. So the recommended conditions of approval state that prior to issuance of our grading or site improvement permits that the applicant needs to provide detailed responses on how they meet. In this case, chapter three, three, six, zero, eight, geothermal generating systems. I I highlighted some of this because I want everyone to understand that there are quite a few hoops to jump through here. So for the geothermal alone, written notice of intent is submitted to the county, description of the potential impacts. Statement, it needs to be provided to the county that we will have access to the data that is that is found as a result of some of the following items, monitoring plan, numeric aquifer model. The the drilling tests have not occurred yet, so the applicant will need to jump through those hoops. And that's why I previously stated, I thought their timeline was ambitious. I think there are a number of ways that this could maybe be extended, but staff is able to support the fact that while they don't have those details at this point, as conditions, we feel secure that we'll be aware of any potential impacts. They'll also at that further design stage be addressing items like screening, lighting, noise. Again, also mentioned in the last item, we do have sound limitations based in in title fifteen for both for both geothermal and solar facilities, specifically for geothermal at the property line. The sixty five D V A is a number you heard before, that's decibel average. That would have to be part of the information submitted to the county for review. So we have to to do some tests or otherwise provide details for how we could be ensured that the the designs in compliance with chapter three, three, six, zero, eight. The solar generation code section is a little less stringent than geothermal. But notably, that they do need to demonstrate at least a fifteen hundred foot setback from any residentially zone properties. So that's the east side of the site, as currently contemplated, they're nowhere near that. But they will have to ensure that any potential expansions never infringe upon that setback, as well as providing acknowledgement and approval documentation from N B Energy for connection to their grid. And then finally, the the industrial code section, again, more generalized types of items you would expect from a development code, so addressing parking, loading, pollution, glare from lights, so they have to be cast downward and all this like as well as ground vibrations. So you know, I can imagine maybe neighboring properties be concerned, but there will be standards placed upon the applicant related to limitations for ground vibrations. And finally, the the recommended conditions of approval, I I called out a couple of highlights here and we've already gone through them. Specifically, that an A V R, administrative designer view, is required for the research center. The applicant must comply with all fire recommendation, fire review recommendations. And then condition six, seven, and eight specifically call out the code sections that we went through in detail regarding the performance standards with this development standards for geothermal, solar, and industrial. As a result of of reviewing the findings, staff is able to make a recommendation of approval for the project. They obviously, we have an applicant representative here as well, so I'm available for questions and I'm not sure if there's another presentation.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for Lewis specifically?
Just a couple of brief ones. How many modular data centers do you know are going to be there total?
I don't know.
You don't know, okay. Okay, well, you can speak to that in a minute, okay. You'll have an opportunity, you know, and then just ever so briefly, I've noticed just being around other geothermal that odor can be a problem, you know, visiting Old Faithful, you know. And that's not so much addressed in here, but I've never noticed an odor out in that area, you know, just traveling by. So is that something, you know, kicking that up, is that going to be a concern?
I have a fundamental understanding of how geothermal plants work, but I can't even pretend that I am an expert on the results. So I'll certainly, if you'll allow the applicant to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
For. Thank you, Lewis. If nobody else has any more questions, we'll hear from the applicant, please. And please sign your name for us.
All right, such a good time, listening to our presentation today. My name is Eli Dawson, I'm the co-founder, CEO of a company called Stat Muse, which I'll tell you about in a second. And then also now CEO of a new company called K Scale, which is the core of the presentation today. So Stat Muse is the largest search engine in the world for sports and financial information. It's an A I based search engine, so instead of doing keywords like you do on Google, you can just ask it a question. You know, what are the most threes in the game by Steph Curry, or one of the most points that ever in the playoffs for Michael Jordan? Will immediately answer it, or you know, what are the return and I P this quarter? And the company is backed by Disney, Google, then it felt player association, many other top notch investors. And we now get over a billion, a little over a billion search impressions every full month. So the company is experiencing incredible growth. And a little over two years ago, I moved to Nevada, my family here, bought a house here, had my first kid here, so I'm all in on Nevada, guys. So I moved here and then I started with my company here, search engine first. And then as we started going through this incredible growth phase, I started looking at our compute costs. And just like Amazon before me or Google before me started doing exponentials and said, wow, if these numbers keep going up, that's going to get really expensive and something that used to be fine as a cost, I need to start in insourcing. So a little over nine months ago, I was introduced to Bill Ene, who's on the team with me as well, Jim Chico. Bill runs E enterprises, one of the leading geologists in northern Nevada. And Jim runs desert engineering, one of the leading construction hearing firms up here. So Jim, so Bill and I started traversing northern Nevada, looking for cheap, you know, really abundant, you know, energy, particularly geothermal land. Once I continued to learn more and more about the geothermal potential versus solar, that became my top focus was where could I find a really rich geothermal system to develop that we could expand from. And then that led to the creation of our next company, which is a, go to the next slide, I don't know if you guys have a chance. So as we kind of came to the end of that endeavor, I realized, okay, we're going to do this. And it's best actually launching a new entity because, you know, we think there's enormous opportunity with geothermal in Nevada as I, you know, continue to get smart on it. And that for the most part, we feel that it's been under invested in and that our company alone can, you know, fill a lot of need there. And then as we expand the geothermal, obviously, the more renewable clean energy we bring online in the state, there's many uses of use cases for if I ever run out of it myself. So K Scale is a Nevada based vertically integrated energy company. As I said, it's recently launched, it'll be launched in partnership with my other company, Stat Muse. Just for a little background, K Scale stands for the Kardashian scale. The Kardashian scale is a nerdy, a nerdy Soviet astronomer's idea about measuring the progress of civilization based on how much energy you could bring online for human or pure intelligent man being. And and just this idea of saying the more, you know, abundant energy you have, particularly if you can make it clean and renewable, the better off everyone is, right? This kind of this fundamental prospect. And I think if you look around today, I don't know if anyone else was in Reno with me and it's had their their power draw out multiple times already this summer from from the grid being a little little overheated, you know, we need more power generation, just like the project earlier, bringing solar online. And I think in Nevada, geothermal is kind of the the home run opportunity that, you know, for the most part, has been underdeveloped. Which then brings us to the next, so this project, K Web, the K Scale Wabaska Energy Park. Out of, you know, Bill and I traversing northern Nevada, we decided this was the best location to really be the flagship location for this new energy company. And so our plan at Wabaska is to have what's essentially a mixed use energy park. So we will have some solar, which you can see to the west here, but the primary focus is geothermal and really maxing out the geothermal system there. Homestretch is near the areas, people know it's it's more of a pilot geothermal project relative to how big the resource is. And so we're looking in to have this to the flagship, obviously expanded as much as we can, have it supplemented by solar. And then as we mentioned, there is a natural, a preexisting natural gas line on the property that we're just looking to tap with the gym set, so we can have early power generation. So the idea is we have our own kind of mini microgrid between solar tapping existing natural gas and then developing the geothermal. And then, you know, to start, the needs really are just to focus are serving my existing company, technology company. But over time, I think people mentioned Green Link, I know there's discussions of Green Link running through this property. If N B Energy ever wants to knock on the door and say, hey, could you send us some of that power, we're open to that, but that's that's not the business and that's not the focus for us. It's really building data centers. Um, you go to the next slide, oh, actually, did we skip one? Maybe the next, should have three pictures. There we go, it's fine, just go to the next one. Oh, yeah, all right, so we mentioned an innovation lab or R and D lab. And then I discussed how the vertically integrated energy company. So our our big focus, I think, if you look at the supply chain today, and you know, this core problem I started with, which is how do I make sure my own compute costs for my company don't don't really explode in my face? And so you first say, okay, well, I need to bring in my own energy and I need to get my own compute and quit, you know, uploading all that to Amazon like I do today. And then we started, you know, as we started building this, we started realizing there's many other challenges in the supply chain. And so we're very keen on essentially vertically integrating the business, which is just saying every part of it that we can own, whether it's making our own turbines, making our own mini data centers. We're looking to do that, and those are all, for the most part, the things we're looking to do out here in Nevada and starting with this R and D center. So it it's generic at a high level because as you'll see, that's it's really like a, you know, me's workshop for us to start and build from. We'll obviously have the right permits as we go in with specifics of what we're going to do first and second and third. But to walk it through the idea of vertically integrating, we're really keen on additive manufacturing or three D printing as the more colloquial term. And if you think of the state of the art of additive manufacturing, not, you know, three D printing in your garage, but we can do now with with literally three D printing concrete structures or metal, which are the middle two here. So the far right one's actually a three D printer for concrete structures. So that's probably like a twenty by forty, you know, quote unquote printer. But you'll see, you can load up, you know, a a cat design essentially, and it'll print, you know, your basketball court or a patio. Or in our case, you know, something that could be modular blocks that you can build with, right? So that's the type of thing that we'll have in R and D center, which is, you know, just to dog food and build, you know, verticalize as much of our own building process. Whether it's actual construction or the data centers or the turbines, essentially the areas that we consider either the biggest risks from a commodity perspective or just a supply chain, if this breaks down and we can't find another turbine, that's an issue, right? That brings to the middle one, the middle one's just another example of stated art additive manufacturing for metal. You can essentially print objects that are metal now, it really like drips metal and it hardens. So, you know, throughout our application, you've heard us make these terms of mini modular data centers and and hyper efficient, you know, mini modular turbines. And what that's really saying is that on the far left there is a new modern modular geothermal turbine. And you see, it's really just a small container. And so unlike maybe homestretch, or I think even the older conceptual picture we had, that's kind of the way you could build geothermal of the past, kind of a massive turbine fit for the resource, right? Whereas what we're looking to do, particularly given the opportunity of the land, which is, we believe there's at least ten megawatts of geothermal potential on the floor, hopefully up to twenty, and then, you know, how much can we expand with the neighbors, which we've both already started some conversations with. And that essentially will drive how many data centers we can put on there before I have to go find other other property to have a second location. But you see that the mini modular and going back to vertically integrating, you know, these are essentially what things we're looking to make ourselves. We'll buy them to start, but then we're looking to manufacture them ourselves. And they should be much cleaner from the data center perspective and from a kind of turbine perspective, so that even the turbines live in a little container and that, you know, imagine you have one megawatt. In the past, we've built a turbine that's one megawatt, now you build a two hundred and fifty kilowatt turbine and you stack four of them. And so it's much cleaner, it's, you know, more anti fragile. And then for our case, you know, it's something that we hope to to actually take in house so that we we can roll our own and create more jobs for there as well. So that's, I think, hopefully gives more color about what we're looking to do in the R and D center. And it's really part of the core project or company ethos of verticalizing what we consider other key parts of the business beyond the energy that, you know, are risks to us. And I think that's key, I can go back to the schedule, just go back one more, just to hit on it, I already talked about the mini modular, but you know, people on the schedule, it was discussed, I just want to note, it it is an aggressive timeline. Our project, our own power plant project consultant reminds me that on every call how aggressive it is. Maybe that's the kind of, you know, technology entrepreneur spirit in me where I'm just trying to get this going. I also looked at the energy costs continuing to rise, and that's a risk to my company. So I'm just trying to get ahead of that risk before it's, you know, I move too slow. And so with that, we understand, you know, there's setbacks expected, we are looking to move pretty fast with it. And then hopefully that just means, you know, a new a new company hiring more Nevadans sooner rather than later. And I don't know if there's any questions. Oh, yeah, so so an actual data modular centers, we have it by phases. But if you look at how you build those, it's, my answer could be a trick question because you could have one, one data center that holds a hundred computers, or you could have one data center that holds two hundred and fifty because they are modular, so you can actually extend them. So that's something, once we get more into the building, it's really optimizing for, other than the the core plant site, optimizing for where your wells truly end up going. And then as we, you know, deal with kind of noise and airflow, the advantage of modular is you, you're not stuck with a megalithic or monolithic, sorry, structure. You could adapt it. And so so ultimately, that's my answer, I would say refer to the phases to what we're describing as our build out. In more more reality, you know, the data centers can, you know, we can make one slightly bigger than the other one because the modular nature of it, that should be a benefit because it should just give us more flexibility to change, you know, slight shapes, you know, to optimize around things like noise or airflow.
I was wondering, yeah, if it was by phase, you know, what your total might be. And the adaptability sounds really good because it makes, you know, I guess what you do more flexible.
Yes. Yeah, so I can't speak to the power side of the phases better, that's probably easier. So our plan is to the kind of first phase or not phase from like phase one, phase two, you know, bigger, bigger picture of just phases of the project is to get our own microgrid growing about three megawatts with one megawatt being just from the existing natural gas gen set, which is kind of, as I said, the stable base initial power. But then one megawatt solar and then get our first megawatt geothermal. And then you have this microgrid of three sources, then the solar to expand from one to three megawatts. And then you see within a broader project plan, when you talk about potentially going to five to ten megawatts of solar, the land could handle more. I'm, you know, most of I'm, you know, most focused on the geothermal for lots of reasons. It's more efficient power, it's cleaner, it's more renewable, it's more aesthetic. So I'm trying to do as little solar on the property really as possible and maximizing the geothermal. If we're right about it, we'll probably end up with five to 10 megawatts of solar total with kind of the first phase really being going from one to three. And then when it comes to the geothermal, so once we could get this kind of microgrid going, it's really then just about maxing out the geothermal in kind of, you know, well after well, until we, you know, hit the limits of the system, which is kind of a long rest of phase, in the project phases, phase three. And so the geothermal, the core land, out of the 390 acres, Bill believes we can get about 10 to 20 megawatts out of it. And that's, you know, that's going to be our limit. And then as I said, there are neighbors, we've already engaged discussions with, just about could we expand the system in the future? And I would say at least the early feedback, feedback there is that neighbors all seem optimistic and encouraging of the projects. And I think that's because they've always had geothermal opportunity around them on their own land. And the opportunity with homestretch never really expanded on the geothermal side. So as I said, I think some people do it more as a maybe pilot, but for us, it's, I start with our core property and then how much bigger can we go geothermal? Maybe the whole system could double that, but I think our core property tend to 20 is staying.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions? No one? Okay, now, we'll take public comment and if nobody else has questions, I am gonna thank you and we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. If you want to come up, you can write your name and you get three minutes to speak.
Good morning. Wow, Wabaska used to be famous for my sister's castle. And now we're the epicenter of solar and geothermal and everything going on. It's great. My question is, you keep saying geothermal, but you have an underground water right?
Excuse me, you need to address only the commission, no one in the audience, please. Thank you.
The question of course is, I don't know if anyone's aware, but the state right now is asking us to give up the entire valley and Smith Valley to give up underground water rights. And so whenever I hear the word geothermal, because we see the other plant, we think, is there a water right? Are they going to make a new water right? It's a closed basin. And so the question always comes up, I mean, how big is it going to be? How many acre feet? Then I heard the word, well, whatever it produces. And so these are just questions that, that current supplemental and primary well wide, well right users have.
Thank you.
I also want it noted here because it's becoming an issue throughout this valley, I mean, the lawsuits are ready to fly, that we are told that that is the, a different basin than the Mason Valley Basin, which is also separate from the Smith Valley Basin. Of course, we all know that the headwaters for all of us is to the south in, in the Topaz area, the Bridgeport area. So I want it noted here because I think the lawyers are about to fly out there in the Yaritton area. I want it noted, please, that that is a different basin according to the state engineer. However, the water from that basin is being transferred into our basin. And that may become a real problem down the line litigation wise, depending on where the state goes with our curtail. At one time during the last drought, they tried to really curtail as hard. They have the right to go back in and, on agriculture, and by the way, on, on industry and everyone else too, even cities. And there have been some recent court rulings that lumps all this water together. So they have the right to come back in and curtail by priorities. What they're trying to do now, the state, which, you know, it has some merit, is to try and get everyone to cooperate, but to lessen their pumpage. So, so when I hear these things, I question, and I know how the state is because, you know, we're in a solar geothermal era, probably going to okay this thing, but the question will be, how much and where does the water go? And then the question is, because there's been a huge issue with the natives and insurers on whether that water can encroach upon them. In fact, the water out there at one time was sold to them, just for your information, and through the EPA and different things, they curtailed it.
Okay? Thank you. Please sign your name for us, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Julianne, I'm a consulting geologist, I'm working with K-Scale on this project. And I think Audrey asked about the water out at Wabaska. The Wabaska, existing Wabaska facility has a surface discharge permit. And the state doesn't issue surface discharge permits anymore. So, and on the plans, you'll see that we have injection wells. 100% of the fluid goes back, goes back in the ground, so there's no, no consumption of any water. And, and in some instances, there will, there is some water, there are some water rights out there that we've been talking to people about if there's water for cooling. And there's also some, sometimes we can get a small portion of produced geothermal fluid as consumptive rights that goes back in. But in, in essence, you want to, you want to inject as much water as you can into the system, back into the system to maintain your reservoir pressure. So it's a balancing act. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we're, we're, we're well aware of what the water issues are. And as part of a prudent geothermal system, you know how that water works.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment or questions? Any commissioners have any questions? Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make it. Based on findings A3G, I note that the Lyon County Planning Commission approved the request by K-Scale LLC for a conditional use permit to allow for a geothermal generating system and a solar power generating facility on approximately 390.4 acre parcel in the ME Industrial Estate Zoning District located at 555 North Highway 95A, Mason Valley, APN 01408105PLZ 2022 169, subject to the 17 conditions of approval.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're going to take a five-minute break before we come back. Okay, we're back. Item 8E for possible action, forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for Lyon County's request for a code amendment for Title 15 to amend table 15.320-1 in order to permit agricultural tourism subject to a conditional use permit in the RR10 and RR5 zoning districts and other matters pertaining thereto.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director, for the record. Yeah, I have another code amendment here. I'll give you a little bit of background on this one. We have an applicant or a citizen come in. There was, they have an existing vineyard and were, they were requesting to put a tasting room on their property. And we took a look at the use and it really didn't fit for the zoning, the zoning was RR5. We didn't really have anything that would allow for the tasting room portion of the vineyard. And so, and I'm taking a look at code, Louis and I had a few discussions on this and Louis came up with a really good idea, I, I think, to to change our requirements for the agricultural tourism. Currently that's allowed as a conditional use in RR20, but it wasn't permitted in RR10 or RR5. And so, you know, and taking a look at it, it didn't, didn't quite make a lot of sense. So we are putting forth this proposed code amendment. So the summary, this would just change the permitted uses in RR5 and RR10 and table 15320-1 to allow for agricultural tourism with the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit, we feel would allow for us to make sure that all of the, the potential impacts to surrounding properties are addressed and make sure that, that there's no significant issues there. Agricultural tourism is, as defined by our code, is agriculturally related accessory uses designed to bring the public to the farm on a temporary or continuous basis, such as you pick farm sales, retail sales of farm products, farm mazes, pumpkin patch sales, farm animal viewing and petting, wagon rides, farm tours, or a cultural nurseries and associated display gardens, cider pressing, wine or cheese tasting. So the, so the wine tasting comes in. So if you could go to the next slide, please. Essentially, this ordinance just adds the two conditional uses under RR10 and RR5, as you can see in the table there, slide please. One of the nice things about this is we actually already have performance standards listed for agricultural tourism. And so this is in 335, I believe. And you can see agricultural related industry on, and by the way, this doesn't change as a result of this ordinance. And I just wanted to go through this real quick so that you guys get a feel for the standards that we have. So this is related to agricultural tourism. And it says, storage of planting materials such as soil amendments, compost, fertilizer, bark, etc., shall meet storm drainage runoff control requirements to protect against pollutants entering the stormwater collection system or outside storage areas including dumpsters, pallet and used plant container storage must be sited to the rear of the building compliant with the setbacks required of the building's underlying zone and made unnoticedable from both adjacent residential properties and public rights of way through installation of either solid fencing or vegetated. Next slide, please. The facility shall provide off-street parking to meet the requirements set forth in chapter 401 of this title. Restrooms shall be provided that are available to customers. Garbage receptacles shall be placed and provided in convenient areas for use by customers and emptied at a frequent see so that as to minimize any trash blowing onto adjacent properties. The facility's lighting shall be shielded to prevent light and glare spillover onto adjacent properties. Actually found an error in our code where we duplicated number three and number seven, they're the same condition. So at some point we'll take a look at fixing that as well. And then number eight there, a winery must conform to the state regulations contained in Nevada statute 369 and 597. And so with that, I'll answer any questions. Actually, Mike Lennox is here, he was the one that brought this to our attention, so.
First, we'll see, do, does anybody have any questions for Andrew? Okay, if you would like to speak, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mike Lennox. I'm from Silver Springs and I've been working on opening a winery. And we're actually making the processing room right now down at some industrial property that I have in Silver Springs. But, but this is, it gives us the ability to, to, to open a tasting room where the grapes are. So, so, and, and, and the vision would be that, that there'd be more, more wineries, you know, like the Pellegrines have a beautiful winery here, vineyard here, you know, so give them the opportunity if they want to open a winery and have a tasting room. The more we would have throughout the county, the better it would be for, for, you know, everybody. Tim Burke, who's the owner of Artisan Winery in Trump, his, his mother lives up in Dayton. So, he's, he's actually talked about the potential for like a tasting room in Dayton. So, so, so that's basically it. If you guys have any questions that I could answer that way.
Any questions?
We, we, we have five, we've got five different varieties that we're growing right now. We have Merlot, Pinot Noir, Pinot Gris, Chardonnay and Riesling. And Riesling actually is, is the, the one that is growing the best. I'm in a group, the Vatic Grape Growers Association, and we're working with UNR and actually UNR is going to start plant, you know, planting and doing some more studies on it. And they're, they're, they want to see this industry grow. So, so we ended up partnership with them. So, so, yeah. So, those are the varieties that, that we're growing. Other growers have some Botnac, which is a hybrid that can handle the cold a little better. We, we've done well. The great, our vines have been in there for, for about 13, 14 years right now. So, they, they, they've grown very well. So, so it's a project my dad started, started as a hobby and it's too big for hobby, not quite big enough for a business. So, gotta jump in with both feet and maybe, and we'll work to expand it. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any other public comment on this item? And please write your name for us.
Good morning. My name's Leslie Somay and I'm from Smith. I don't really have a dog in this fight in that I live on the 20th and we actually, it's rural residential, but we have CCNRs that would prohibit this sort of thing. My concern is I have lived in an area where five acre parcels that were rural residential or equivalent started opening up to ag tourism. And, and although I like the idea of wineries, I like the idea of wine tasting, the problem is on a five acre parcel, it really, the ag tourism thing really opens a Pandora's box. You start with a quaint farm stand for homegrown produce becomes farm dinners. Wine tasting during the day becomes wine dinners at night. You have, at the neighborhoods, personal favorites are usually the weddings, the farm, you know, little country weddings and/or farm stays. So, I don't know that this county has had issues yet with short-term rental situations in neighborhoods. But, opening rural residential fives and tens to this sort of industry, commercial industry could open that Pandora's box for a lot of neighborhood conflict throughout all the rural communities in this county. So, I'd like to see a solution somehow. But I think for the folks that it would adversely impact, impact throughout the neighborhoods in the county, I hope that you will ask for a little further research or look at alternative, alternatives for this sort of, thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew, wouldn't the conditional use permit portion of that?
Yes. Yeah. So, I mean, with the conditional use permit, obviously, the application can be conditioned depending on the location to address the impacts on neighboring properties. As you can see in the standards, there's like parking's a big issue. And so, they have to provide off-street parking and, you know, account for that and noise and other things. So, I do believe that that could be addressed through the conditional use permit. Hours of operation can be a condition. There's a lot of different things. Weddings would actually not be permitted on this. So, we actually regulate wedding venues pretty heavily in this county. So, the opening up agritourism would not permit that.
Okay, thank you. Can you please sign your name for us, sir?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Don Smith. I live in Smith Valley, Bongie. I live on the five acre parcel designated RR, which I believe stands for rural residential. We moved there. Escape the city. Our neighbors pretty much the same way. They have five acre parcels, some horses, some llamas and pretty quiet dirt road, not a lot of traffic. And in reading what this bill is about, sounds to me like this will allow for the commercialization of rural residential five acre departments. Back in the city, we got traffic coming in and out. Neighbor decides they're gonna put in a parking lot to accommodate 10, 15, 20 cars because they're going to do some events. Doesn't sound like something that would continue to protect a person who owns a rural residential five acre piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Would you like to address that, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah. The only other thing that I'd like to say is the agritourism is a secondary use. So, you would have to have a house. That's, that's the primary use. So, you couldn't, you know, a company couldn't just come in and buy a five acre lot and start this. They would have to be a house there. There would have to be farming going on there. So, there's some restrictions.
Thank you for clarifying that. Is there any other public comment? Let's see any online. So.
All motion. Based on the staff analysis contained in the staff report, I am the Lyon County Planning Commission Board of Recommendation and Approval for the zoning text amendment request for the Community Development Department to the Board of Commissioners and amend Lyon County Code Title 15, Land Development Code, Chapter 15.320, Section 3, Table 1, as described in the attached ordinance.
All second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Now, we'll recess, recess to convene is the Lyon County Public Lands Management Advisory Board. Item nine, public participation. Is there any public participation on public lands management? Seeing none. Item 10, action items. Do we have any action items?
No action items today.
Item 11, board member comments. Are there any board member comments? Seeing none. Do we have any future agenda items?
None at this time.
Okay. 13, public participation again. Is there any public participation on public lands management? Seeing none, we will adjourn to reconvene is the Lyon County Planning Commission. Item 14, staff comments and commissioner comments.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. Just want to provide you an update on the Board of County Commissioners' actions at the August 4th meeting. We had three ordinances that were adopted, the street name ordinance, the masquerading ordinance, and the resource land ordinance, all those passed 5-0. They did make one change to the street name ordinance and that the Board of County Commissioners will be the final decision-making body on that. So, the planning commission will provide a recommendation. So, so all of those passed 5-0. The conditional use permit for the transmission line north of Fernley was also approved and the extension of time for Woodbridge Estates, the file of final map was also approved. Any questions?
Good morning, Jeff Page. Kind of matter for record, something brings your attention. The Board of County Commissioners also provided direction to me and staff to begin the process and determine feasibility, what it would take to have a hospital in Central Lyon County corridor. We're not, we're not talking about site location, community location as of yet. Right now, we're just trying to figure out what the basic information is needed to even have, have the discussion. Part of my in and out today was doing the rural hospital association or whatever they call themselves today. They are sending me a variety of data and some resources, what it takes to develop a certificate of need for a hospital, those kinds of issues. We've already had phone calls from a number of hospital developers who are more than willing to at a cost build it for Lyon County. Lyon County is not interested in building or maintaining or operating a hospital. We got out of that business a long time ago. But we are interested in working with the private sector to see what it would take to provide some type of a critical access acute care facility in the Central Lyon County corridor somewhere, or somewhere in South Lyon County corridor. I've also received feedback from the city of Fernley, residents of the city of Fernley, why aren't we doing something up here? City Fernley, as you know, is its own political subdivision. I'm more than willing to have conversations with them and assist them in that process. But, the direction from the board was specifically the Highway 50 corridor and addressing the population. So, between Dayton, Silver Springs, and St. George, there's about 24,000 people. The Highway 50 corridor EMS traditionally transports anywhere from 45 minutes to three hours depending on staffing at hospitals, how loaded ERs are, that type of patient, whether they're going to Reno or Carson. So, it'll be a benefit to Central Lyon Fire and keeping ambulances on the road. It will also be a detriment to Central Lyon Fire because it's a critical access hospital. Those folks that cannot be treated at the hospital because their conditions cannot be treated there, will have to be transferred to another facility. Similar will happen down here in South Lyon Medical Center. So, it's going to add workload to them as well. So, we're looking at all the, all the issues. I don't anticipate that we'll see groundbreaking for four to five years if we're actually able to, to do something. So, I don't want the public getting all excited, but yep, we're building a hospital day after tomorrow. If you recall, some of you will recall, we just started discussing in 1987 about a new jail facility. We finished completion of that project in 2013. So, I anticipate four to five years before we see any fruition of actually having a hospital in the Central Lyon County corridor. Any questions or concerns?
There's a key word here, feasibility.
Feasibility. And there are a number of issues to go into that. You know, the biggest challenge is patient mix. By that, I mean, what's the population as far as Medicare, Medicaid, self-pay versus insurance? Because that is a huge challenge. I can tell you that down here, just from the EMS side, we have a huge Medicare, Medicaid, self-pay. So, Mason Valley Fire is writing off a number of annual bills every month, the tens of thousands of dollars on a monthly basis. And so, hospitals don't like to see that. They want to be able to at least break even, not the problem hospital like South Lyon want to at least break even. And so, that, that's always a challenge. And the easy part, like building a jail, building the facility is the easy part. Staffing it is the challenging part. I have, we have an employee whose wife works at Carson Tower as an ICU nurse. During the height of COVID, she was working six, eight weeks straight without a day off. And so, finding healthcare providers is a bit of a challenge in rural Nevada, let alone urban Nevada. So, there are a number of issues ahead of us. And so, I'm not here to cast doom and gloom. We're going in at the approach as to, is it feasible? And if it is, where does it go? And what type of facility do we need? Behavior health is another huge issue for this region. We need someplace to take people that are in crisis. We have the Mallory Center in Carson City, but it at times is full as well. Substance abuse is another issue than with alcohol and drug issues. So, is there a way of addressing some of those needs for this facility as well? As well as having more localized nursing care, long-term care for people who are now at least in the Central Lyon County corridor, either coming to Yerington or a facility in Carson or Reno, or if they're severe Alzheimer's being shipped to Utah because there aren't facilities available right now for those folks. So, there's a number of things we can look at to provide that healthcare. The county's goal has been for a good number of years now to improve our healthcare rankings. Right now, we're 13 and 14, which is better than what we used to be, which is 15 and 16. So, we are slowly, we're surely climbing up. But all comes back to being able to have the providers to provide the service that we need. So, that is the biggest challenge. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Staff or commissioner comments? Okay, public participation. No, no action will be taken. But, yes. I'm, let me finish what I gotta read. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there any public comment? Please sign your name for us. Over here. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Darlene Ticker and I've been a member of this community for easily 55 years. And I do have a nursing background. That's why I'm concerned with what I heard. A lot of what he said is, is true, verifiable. However, my concern is that the people that live here are not able to travel to those other places to get any healthcare. They're just not able, even with helping hands, helping hands is not able to take people to their, a doctor appointments and things out of town anymore because they have lack of drivers. We need that healthcare as minimal as it may seem. They, I've heard people call it a Band-Aid station for years. Okay, but you know what? When you're bleeding and you can't get to another facility, that Band-Aid helps. And when you need something urgent and you need something emergency, this place has its place and it does a good job of what it does. And it, it needs to be acknowledged for what it does, not for what it doesn't do. It has its standing, it has its purpose, and it has the staffing. And yeah, that does go back and forth, but that's normal for a regional facility. The thing is, what it's doing, and what it's doing now, what it has been doing, is important. And it's important to the people that are local here and the people that can't get to these other places that are so far away. It really needs to stay established. Please consider that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time?
Based on that, I didn't hear that he was, they were not going to keep the facility. They just need another facility. Dayton and Fernley off the 50. You guys have a facility here.
Excuse me.
Yeah. Well, this is not an agenda item, so we can't discuss.
I would note there won't be any discussion. Okay, so it's 11:29 and we are adjourned.